Fellas meeting the orders, City of Groves, noticing a regular meeting of City Council. City Council Chambers, Groves City Hall, February 27, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. You're all rise for the prayer and pledge, Councilmember Vinsel.
Our file we come to this hour ask of your blessing and help us as we're gathered together here tonight. We pray for your guidance in the matters at hand as you show us the path to take to the city. Help us to work together and encourage each other. We ask these things in your name. Amen. And remember that.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which we serve, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, City Clerk, please.
Mayor Bourne.
Here.
Mayor Proton McAdams.
Here.
Councilmember Debus.
Here.
Councilmember Oliver.
Here.
Councilmember Vinsel.
Here.
Welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. Item four, we approve the minutes of the February 13, 2023 City Council meeting.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of the February 13, 2023 City Council meeting.
I second a motion and second to approve the minutes. The February 13, 2023 City Council meeting, do we have any questions? No questions, vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Proton McAdams.
Aye.
Councilmember Vinsel.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Debus.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item five, we receive the minutes of the February 13, 2023 Planning and Zoning Meeting. Please everybody's got a copy of the document. Item six, reports. First, report from Events Coordinator Libby Legend regarding the 2023 Spring Fest.
This is what I need for the event. Mayor and Council, thank you for letting me give my report today. We are so excited for our 2023 Spring Fest. It will be held at Lyons Park from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. March 25. Today, we received our 40th vendor. We are accepting vendors until March 1st. The vendor spots are $20 per spot. We'll have a DJ, we'll have fun activities that include giant jenga, cornhole washers, hula hoops, chalk. Avenue Max will be out there, as well as the Easter Bunny by the county plaza home. We have spoken with all the necessary departments. Fire and police will be out there monitoring the events. Public Works Maintenance Department will be there throughout setup and cleanup. We'll make sure the water, sewer, electricity are available for those vendors who do need them, as well as we'll send out a mass Blackboard text message to all the surrounding houses and hand deliver a note making those houses aware of the event, as well as we got with Marshall Rentals today and we'll be having a no parking sign placed on the surrounding houses. I placed the flyer as well as the vendor list in front of you.
Libby, is this the first?
Yes, sir.
Annual or just first?
Well, it's the first because there's no such thing as first annual. There's second annual.
Did you learn that the hard way?
Well, a colleague of mine, she posted on Facebook, we have every time we see first annual, that's not such thing. So we learned that very soon.
I'm curious, and congratulations on all the vendors. How did you go about doing that?
So what we did is me and Sadia at the community building, we kind of brainstormed and we were like, what can we do for a quality of life event? And we're like, springtime, Spring Fest. So we jumped right into it and posted on Facebook that we're accepting vendors. We got with TML, our legal team, as well as Mr. Monk, and then we got with the Jefferson County Health Department for all the legal documents that were needed and then it just kind of blew up from there.
What did the...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You've pretty much got them on Facebook?
Facebook.
So the vendors contacted you on Facebook?
Some of the vendors contacted us, but we also reached out to vendors and there was other people that would tag other vendors. We contacted every single vendor that was at the back to school last because we did tell them any next event, we will contact y'all to let y'all know if y'all want to be a spot. If y'all want one, happy feet.
There you go. And everyone's invited, right?
Everyone is invited, yes ma'am.
Are you doing any other advertising besides just what you had put on Facebook?
We post them at Market Basket, on their little bulletin. Some businesses who are in Groves, they'll have their little flyer at their business, but other than that, that's how we advertise. The news has contacted us to come interview with us. We just had a good time yet.
What would you, just kind of brainstorming, I guess, like on 39th Street and Lincoln right here? If there was a banner put across 39th with a festival and an arrow down Lincoln, but put it up already enough for people, the Spring Fest.
We'll look into that, yes sir.
I think it'd be something that would, uh...
Mm-hmm, of course.
Start thinking about what's going on down there.
Right. And we do have it on their billboard, our little sign. Right now it says accepting vendors, but March 2nd it will change.
The banner's false, but maybe it's something we could, you know.
Right.
Can you make one? Oh, which one is five?
You can run it by me there.
That's good.
There you go.
Yeah, but we'll look into that.
I'm sorry, I had a rush.
That's okay.
You've got on the electronic billboard?
On the electronic billboard right now it says accepting vendors, but March 2nd it changes to what's in front of you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Libby. Good job. Item six B, the presentation of the 2022 UCR NIVRS Report from City Marshal Norman Reynolds.
Mayor, Council, tonight will be presumed both the 2022 UCR and the Racial Profiling Report. These start in the year of 20... There you go. Let me start with the, this first, the racial profiling. The, I think your order is read, the UCR report first, 2022 UCR report. The crime summary that I gave you is, if you refer to that, it's the one with the, it's two pages and it's got all of the dates back to 2002 on it. The self-explanatory, but let me go through the offenses and just explain, you know, how they've changed from one year to the next. With the total, our Part 1 index crimes have been, have reduced this past year in 22, 22 from 2021 from about 50 offenses. They went from 251 to 351 offenses, or... I'll set that backwards. They've gone down to 251, thank goodness. Like I told you last year, this is probably the lowest year that we've had, maybe even since the 60s. This is yet another lowest year that we've had on the index crime. Last year, we had, we had one murder as opposed to zero the year before. The rapes went down to seven from 17. Robberies down to five from 11. Aggravated assaults are down to 43 from 65. My progress is rough a little bit. They were 44 this year. Last year we had, they were down to 41. The thefts have gone down from 135 to 130, and our auto thefts are down to 21 from 32 last year. Again, for a total of 251 offenses total. Well, I've given you the little report, explained a little bit of it. Currently, we're full staff. By the way, just to let you know, it's helped us, I believe, too. I think that's a big reason why we're having more success. So we're pleased with that. And real confident going forward with the group officers who we have right now. And I don't believe that we've... A lot of departments are struggling with their numbers. We're doing fairly well. Instead of actually, instead of being so rigid, and just, you know, we're real pleased with the quality officers that we've been handling the last few years. I think we've had to compromise ourselves a lot, even though we're competing with, you know, bigger, bigger areas of, you know, larger pain. That's about it for that.
How many officers do we have over there?
We have 23 full-time officers. We have one part-time. The part-time being Wayne Graham, who's our... He works 10 hours on Tuesdays.
And that counts detective? I'm sorry, does that count detectives?
Yes, that counts detective. Detectives, we have five detectives. And then myself and Kurt, plus I, there's seven along that hall. We have 16 patrolmen. And four of those are patrol sergeants.
Well, I would like to think that word's gotten out, just don't mess with the Groves Police Department. Goes down. You're on it. You are on it.
Yeah, well, we're, like I said, being full staff helps and I think that, I've said it before, you have to give them credit. I mean, they're out there, I've had a lot of compliments recently about the officers being seen. I say, hey, I'll drive this side of town and then over to that one, I'll see two between here and there. So that has to do with being full staff, I think, you know, they're not just out of phone calls, they're moving around and being seen. So I think that's more the benefits of that, too. Besides cutting our overtime down and all the other good things that come with it. Any more questions about the UCR reporters?
Yeah, we'll move right on into the next one. It's the presentation of the 2021 Racial Profiling Report. City Marshal Norman Reynolds.
Yes, Mayor. We've been doing it since 2003, for those of y'all who aren't aware of that. And we're required to submit an annual report for racial profiling report to our governing body. And we've done that, like I said, ever since 2003. I submitted last year's TECO report to the state. These reports can also be accessed through the TECO website for public review as well. And that's the same paperwork that I gave you that's... There's two packets together that have the TECO information on that. It breaks it down into, describes all the different stops. During the time, the numbers, over those years, the numbers that we've collected verify that we've never had a disproportionate number of stops, searches, or arrests of minorities. And you wrote the police department, it's not condoned selective enforcement of any kind. This report, like I said, it self-described further data collected by our agency during the time. If you look on the room with the gold badge on, the second page. What name? Uh, it's me, sorry. And the second page of the gold badge includes a comparison made against the demographics of Jefferson County versus the demographics of Groves. This table demonstrates that officers can come in contact with a diverse ethnic population. And I've broken it down to the number of stops between African Asian, Caucasian, Hispanic, and Native Americans and the percentage of those, of each of those stops. And of course, across the column there is the, is the Groves versus Jefferson County demographics. Again, I don't, I don't, we don't have any problem with it, we never have, and this is not something that we've ever had any issues with.
Any other questions, Marshal? Anything else, Mark?
That'll be it.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Item 7A, discuss and take a vote on setting a date for a work session to discuss the public works wastewater system.
Uh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Citizen report, or citizen column here.
You called me. Thank you, sir. Larry Manino, $4,100 grand. Guys, I've been coming to this meeting for many years. And I sit in the back of that room and I try very hard to respect everything y'all do. I know when you come in here, you take a pledge that you're gonna do everything that's gonna be right for the City of Groves. I'm saying this Baker Tilly thing is not right for the City of Groves. I'm begging you, please. It almost got passed, but if the citizens of Groves knew what was in that package, they'd say the same thing I'm saying. We don't need that kind of people finding candidates for us. We've had too many problems in the past to go back to the same problems. Please, I'm begging you, do not vote for... We've got two other people to choose from. I would appreciate that if you would consider that. The next thing. My son lives at 3908 Berry. We've been trying to get this city to fix the ditch in front of his house for three years. We offered to buy the cupboards because water stands causes mosquitoes real bad. He's in a particular situation that's bad. Half of his house, right in the sewer line of his property, half goes to 39th Street, the other half goes to the highway. All they would have to do is dig this side, one whole property. But the person who lives right next to him bought those cupboards and the driveway are destroyed. So it won't drain that way at all, so that's what's causing it to stay. Everything on 39th goes away. But everything on this side stays in his front yard and across the street, same way. So I'm asking for your help. Three years I've asked. They said, we don't put cupboards in yards? Well, that's not true. I just noticed that they put 75 feet of pipe on Lincoln and Adams. I got pictures if you want to see it. Steve told us they don't do that anymore. We don't cover ditches because we have too many problems with that. Well, that's not a true statement. That's not fair to all the other citizens when you tell us we don't do that anymore, and then you do it. And I'm not even saying you did it. I don't know who did it. I'm telling them it's a new home. It's done, okay? One more thing, I can't help but to bring this up. A lot of the reasons why I come down here is because we were so far in debt. And every time I ask, I was told that it was because of the hurricane. We're in full $300,000, $400,000 in debt, and when we asked, they would not tell us. And I'm not blaming any of you because none of you was on that council. They would never tell us where the money went. But when we asked, they kept telling us it was FEMA. So, okay, so I very politely sit back there. FEMA came, FEMA gave us our money. We're still in debt. We had no idea, just like the last meeting. They tried to tell you that the citizens of this Groves has no idea what we can do or can't do. We don't know. Y'all probably won't ever tell us, but it's not fair to us. We pay the taxes. All we want is what's right. We need an audit to clean this up and get it out of y'all's ballpark and make it right for everybody. $65,000 ain't nothing. The straight thing he did is straight. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Mr. Manino.
Any other comments? If you want to ask any questions?
Oh, sir, I thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Like I say, I sit back there, but, you know, some things have to be said. Thank you.
Any other citizen comments? Anybody out front? Any other citizen comments? 7A, discuss and take a vote on setting a date for a work session to discuss the public works wastewater system.
I make a motion to discuss and take a vote on setting a date for a work session to discuss the public works wastewater system. I'll say.
I have a motion and second to discuss and take a vote on setting a date for a work session to discuss the public works wastewater system. Any questions, Mr. Beal?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make sure that council and the mayor were updated on some things with our wastewater system. We have some issues in there, and I think the work session would be the best time. I talked over with Michael Tenra and Troy Foxworth, and they agree that we need to get out there. There's quite a few people in the city, it's more than just a few, that have problems bussing their toilets during the rain. I'm one of them. And you may not know this, so that's why we want, it's just an informational kind of, because this is gonna be an issue that the next city manager will have to tackle. And we just want to give you folks an update of what's going on and give you a heads up. All right, thank you.
By the way, I had emailed the interim city manager and asked some questions about it. He emailed me back, and all of you were included in the email if you want to go and read that.
We don't have a work session planned for the second?
That was just something I threw out there for possible date.
I mean, do you have a work session?
No, we never scheduled it. That was just a date I kind of threw out there to see if that was possible for y'all. There was never set in stone.
Oh, we don't know. That's not enough time, but...
Okay, so, yes, we were.
What about the 6th? That's next Monday. I agree with that. You don't have anything on the 6th?
There's tabs meeting that, but City Council comes first, so if we're wanting on the 6th, yeah, that's not going to be one.
I make a motion that we set a work session to discuss public works wastewater system on March the 6th at 5:00 p.m. at this location. I'll say.
I have a motion and a second to set a work session for March the 6th at 5:00 p.m. in Council Chambers. Do we have any questions about that? No questions, vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Proton McAdams.
Aye.
Councilmember Vinsel.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Debus.
Aye.
Motion passes. Step of being discussed and consider a draft amendment to the existing sign ordinance pertaining to temporary off-site signage in the City of Groves right of ways and easements.
I make a motion that we discuss and consider a draft amendment to the existing sign ordinance between the temporary off-site signage in the City of Groves right of ways and easements.
I'm sorry.
I have a motion and a second to discuss and consider draft amendment to the existing sign ordinance pertaining to temporary off-site signage in the City of Groves right of ways and easements. Do we have any questions? This is a new one, Mr. Beal?
It is. We've made a couple edits coming off of the last draft. One was related to the size of the yard signs that need to be displayed for special occasions. Is that on the... That was on page three. In the yard sign section. We just deleted that restriction of the size of those. And then otherwise, I noticed that we had a penalty provision in there twice, and I deleted that. And those were the only two changes that were made after last session.
Well, the penalty is going to be, it's already on in the ordinance, right? You're gonna use that?
Absolutely. It is in the ordinance. What I had done when the first draft was, I included it twice. So I omitted one provision which included the penalty twice.
The sign, the size on page three under yard signs seeing manner. It says, signs advertising the presence of a home security system shall not exceed one square foot in the area. Are you talking about the land it's positioned on? Or are you talking about the size of the sign itself?
The sign itself.
So like the vivid signs or ADTs, they're about like this.
Oh, okay.
They're about like that. What is it?
Because I was thinking, one square foot's pretty tiny.
Yeah, most of them, they're not real big. I haven't seen any big ones. Yeah, most of those are pretty small.
Okay, so the situation that made a warrant about with this sign, I'm assuming, or I'm guessing that it was at your business you were concerned about, or what?
No, no, no. My daughter plays volleyball and golf for the high school, and her sign is larger than four square feet.
Wouldn't that come out of your...
Oh, I can have, but it's still in my yard. It's still, it falls under this ordinance.
Okay. I thought maybe that you wanted to have me.
But even if it's not, if my parents wanted to put her sign at their house, there was a size restriction. So any of these football players that have the three by four vinyl signs with their pictures on it, those are all, those would have all been in violation of this ordinance.
So we did delete that one.
We deleted it, which, as long as they made the restrictions for not blocking visibility.
But the other restrictions on signage is under the residential real estate sign, right? That's the only other one? That's on page three?
For signs that would be at a home, that's correct.
Yeah.
You covered them, Chris.
Not just me.
No, you know what I'm saying.
Like 30 is a, the 50 football players would have been upset.
If you did not take care of that, your business would be your residence.
Well, that doesn't do it.
Okay, um...
You probably have to cut it down.
I understand, and I agree.
Okay, on vacant lots, I noticed on vacant lots, there's not supposed to be any signage on vacant lots. What if people are gonna sell that lot? They can put a sale sign, for sale sign, right?
Correct. It's still be permitted in residential real estate signage.
Okay. Okay, and what about, we're not, we're not, we're exempting businesses that have banners and...
We intentionally did not take that on. In terms of business signage, there is, you know, could be consideration by council revamping business signage, but we do not take that on in this amendment.
Okay. I know that was a consideration last time. Seasonal signs? Is that under...
It should be in the yard sign section.
Page two?
Page three, yard sign and the definition, part about seasonal decorations as being part of that. But then we put in place no limit on it in C. We state seasonal decorations are excluded from placing manner requirements.
And Minister, we need to have a sign equi... And Mr. Mania has signed equipment out. Where do you put it?
It's on the corner up against the house.
Okay, so his sign's gonna be okay. Um and banners we're not gonna have anything about banners? I don't know if it's necessary I'm just asking.
I didn't address banners specifically. I I could include some language that's even more temporary in nature but that's on address so far.
Um what about wording on signs because I I was going through some different cities that have sign ordinances and one of the things that I noticed is that they would have a uh ordinance that prohibits words on signs such as stop look drive in drive in danger those type of things because they kind of uh especially if it says stop and look and that kind of thing it mixes in with what with normal our normal um signs for driving.
So I think we do have some language that covers that and that in the prohibited signs section uh signs that would be unsafe to the general public were not as specific as the one that you referenced. Um but we we have some language in there that deals with that situation.
What about eliminated signs and flashing signs I didn't see anything in there about that.
I would think that those would be covered by the other provisions that as long as they were um you know in the place of manner that they should be displayed but they're not specifically prohibited. So we'll draft that.
Would it be okay if I emailed you different um I mean language that would pertain to these things?
Of course.
So that I'm just thinking that you know somebody's gonna come up with something and if we don't come up with it first to either allow or prohibit it we're gonna have a a situation.
Sure.
And I'm going through all these these different cities and their signs and some some of their ordinances are really detailed.
They are, yeah, I'm happy to look at any other city guidelines looking at.
Any other comments for this? I guess we need I guess we need a voting on this.
No.
I guess you'll bring us back the next one.
Yes, sir.
Item seven C discuss and take vote on selecting an executive search firm to hire the city manager. It was tabled at the previous meeting.
I make a motion to discuss and take a vote on selecting an executive search firm to hire city manager. I'll say.
Have a motion and second to discuss and take a vote on selecting an executive search firm to hire the city manager. Any questions? Uh Mr. Monk, did you have a chance to look at the contracts from a legal standpoint and were there any significant structural differences that were either concerned or uh that were not joining?
The uh slaven contract specifically spells out a little different than the others that there is an expense figure and a not exceed amount that's a percentage of the professional fees. Um so it's a little unique but then they in their literature they go on to explain that their advertising costs really most likely to be something close to twenty-five hundred dollars which is a very different number than the not exceed amount. So that's something that just jumped out at me is maybe something to consider. Um and then otherwise I think you know Baker Tilly ultimately makes it to where it's all included in their number and their contract support statute.
Well, on slaven uh what Mr. Monk is talking about if you look on page seventeen what it is we discussed this last time and they had talked about it because I asked them about it that their their twenty-four thousand two twenty-four thousand two forty-two is that fifteen thousand six forty plus the eight thousand six oh two uh which is that fifty-five percent Mr. Monk is speaking.
That's right.
So those two together bring it to twenty-four thousand two forty-two. I think uh slaven um in their email um they they have basically the same advertising avenues as Baker Tilly does. They do list a little bit more here than Baker Tilly does. But it's it's basically the same type of advertising.
They have a two years.
Yeah.
Guarantee, yes, right.
That's that's page fourteen.
And nine. Baker Tilly is only one, correct?
Yes, twelve months Baker Tilly's.
That's correct.
Yeah, on page fourteen it says we guarantee our work and will redo the position if the position is vacated for any reason within two years of the employment date of a candidate selected by the city through our efforts. So that's two years and. Slaven does cap their cost though. I went through how they you know their price and they uh how they would expect to be paid on the on both of these companies. Um they're really almost the same. Um slaven says three equal monthly uh invoices thirty percent of the professional fee and then one invoice that's ten percent of the remaining professional fee. And I think Baker Tilly said four month before payment. So it's just about the same. Oh, I know what I was gonna add um. I think slaven is and Mr. Monk can if I'm wrong he's but I think slaven is a little bit more forgiving on their um their search services agreement on F I think they're a little bit more forgiving on if we were to have to terminate a contract with them and how that would be involved than Baker Tilly Baker Tilly uh I may have read it wrong I don't think I did but Baker Tilly I think said you have to pay the total fee. And slaven says up to the point of or the date of when if we need to uh negate the contract. That's on that page and this was in the email.
You're right about that because the uh Baker Tilly contract just doesn't have provisions that allow all that. So there's a clear path in the contract in this slaven contract, so I agree.
Yes. And slaven carries I didn't I didn't see this in Baker Tilly's but slaven says they carry uh the contractor carries a general liability workers compensation and professional liability insurance I didn't see that in Baker Tilly. I went through here and I had I wrote down control issues that you know things that we were concerned and compared them.
All right, I'd like to make a comment I know we we kind of it looks like we narrowed it down to uh I kind of said at the last meeting that I was to me they were kind of evil. Uh at this point I wouldn't mind telling you all I have no problem voting for slaven at this time. Uh I think they'll do a good job. So I'm concerned about our motion here because we did not untable and the motion that was tabled was to vote for Baker Tilly. So as a point of order I think we need to untable that motion. And if it pleases council you know if we're if we're gonna move on from them I don't know how the rest of y'all feel but uh if we're gonna move on from Baker Tilly to slaven we go ahead and vote down the motion that was on the table and then recreate a new one to stay within order.
I agree with that.
Okay, so at this point let's let's kill that conversation and we'll untable the motion that was tabled which was Baker Tilly. And then vote on that.
I made the motion so I'll untable it. Okay, I'll make I'll make a motion to untable the uh decision to select Baker Tilly's executive search firm. My motion said untable.
Take a second. I'll say. I have a motion and a second to untable the vote for Baker Tilly for the executive search firm. Uh do we have any questions? Uh I'll vote mayor votes uh no to Baker Tilly mayor votes in McAdams.
No.
Council member Venzel.
No.
Council member Oliver.
No.
Council member Dugan.
No.
Baker Tilly is voted down we will entertain a new motion for the next executive firm.
I'll make a motion that we select slaven as the executive search firm to hire city manager.
I'll say. Have a motion and a second to select slaven as the search firm for the executive city manager. If we have any questions? All right, no questions we'll vote on the motion mayor votes aye mayor votes in McAdams.
Aye.
Council member Venzel.
Aye.
Council member Oliver.
Aye.
Council member Dugan.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Item seven or eight eight consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh one amending the chapter eleven of the code ordinances of the city grows creating article four governing the operation of food trucks in city remembering emotionally you have to do a state of ordinance we don't have to keep saying it all out loud.
I make a motion we consider approval ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh one.
I'll say have a motion and second to consider the approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh one on the questions and I believe this time Mr. Monk normally even read your little preemptive little top paragraph for you.
An ordinance amending chapter eleven of the code of ordinances of the city of grows creating article four governing the operation of food trucks in the city approving C three district general heavy commercial district for food truck operations approving C two district general light commercial district for food truck operations upon approval of specific use permit providing a permit fee for food trucks and for site permits for food trucks providing a penalty providing for qualification providing for publication by publishing the caption only making findings of fact and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, do you have any questions for Mr. Monk? I would like to make a statement I think and we all everybody kind of chipped in on this one and got it to where I guess everybody's comfortable with it at this time it's made it this far. Um I think it'll be a good thing for us.
The planning and zoning went over this very thoroughly and uh Mr. Monk was at that meeting um and they had some questions and some played devil's advocate about whether this then never happened but they were very pleased with how we structured this and how we covered everything we could possibly think of just to let y'all know.
Uh Dawn's not here but I know Dawn's happy.
Yeah.
Any other questions or statements? Big no vote on the motion mayor votes aye mayor votes in McAdams.
Aye.
Council member Venzel.
Aye.
Council member Oliver.
Aye.
Council member Dugan. Motion passes. Item A B consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh two amending chapter twenty-one article three game room and gaming machines of the code of ordinances requiring a specific use permit application yearly in order to operate in the city grows.
I make a motion to consider approval ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh two.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh two do you have any questions? Mr. Monk, go ahead.
An ordinance amending chapter twenty-one article three game rooms and gaming machines of the code of ordinances of the city grows requiring a specific use permit application yearly in order to operate game rooms and gaming machines in the city providing for qualification providing for publication by publishing the caption only making finds of fact and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Anybody have anything else on this one?
Um I wanted to ask because uh it was discussed with me today. Um somebody can put up a grocery store another little convenience store but they're gaining machines in there but is there a a law or a rule that they can only have so many? Uh would you happen to know?
The the ordinance itself goes with all those specifics um and I have to pull it I don't know off the top of my head how many they would have you know the limit but that's where it comes from.
Okay.
This is just an amendment, right? So the ordinance itself already covers all the restrictions and other ways.
Okay, well I knew they had a separate rule for that type of situation.
That's correct.
Any other questions or comments? Big no vote on the motion mayor votes aye mayor votes in McAdams.
Aye.
Council member Venzel.
Aye.
Council member Oliver.
Aye.
Council member Dugan.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item nine invoice the city manager.
Uh mayor council invoice list for February twenty-seventh twenty twenty-three Corin main registered for water meters twenty-two thousand eight hundred Gilman of Lafayette gas and diesel for January twenty twenty-three twenty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents Houston poly bag trash bags for water office five thousand fifty-eight dollars national playground construction LLC labor for Lions Park playground installation twenty-three thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars republic services peace and dignity program fifty-five twenty-one Marion thirty-seven oh one Pure Atlantic sixty-two fifty-five Warner sixty-three ninety-eight Monroe fifty-nine oh five twenty-fifth forty-nine seventy Wilson sixty-six fifty-seven Washington forty-seven ten Martha Monroe um Indian Springs thirty-eight fifteen Pure Atlantic sixty-five twenty-eight Washington fifty-six hundred thirty-nine and seventy-fourty-eight Washington total seven thousand three hundred forty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents republic services January sludge disposal seven thousand seven hundred eighty-four dollars and one penny Southern Tire Mark sixteen new tires for multiple solid waste vehicles five thousand three hundred thirty dollars and seventy-four cents United rentals one month equipment rentals for thirty-nine street concrete repairs five thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents for a total of one hundred one thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and eighteen cents.
Do you have an issue?
I make a motion we approve the invoice list for February twenty-seventh twenty twenty-three.
A second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the invoice list for February twenty-seventh twenty twenty-three do you have any questions?
Is this the registers we were waiting on?
Uh that was something that was ordered last summer. There's just a few of.
How many is that?
Uh two hundred I think it was.
Uh I have it right here uh one hundred.
One hundred.
That's a hundred meters?
Registers.
Register.
And didn't you say that last week they were already installed?
Oh yeah.
Those one hundred?
Yep.
Way quick.
Uh the Lions Park was that did that Lions Park budget or?
Well, that uh. Mayor, that was uh we thought last time we made the payment that uh we completed it but Lamar went back when we saw this and tried to figure this out but um what they did on July seventh twenty twenty-one we approved the park upgrades for a total of eighty-two thousand three hundred. When we got the other bill it was fifty-eight thousand three hundred seventeen dollars and two. When we got the other bill, it was fifty-eight thousand three hundred seventeen dollars and two cents. If you add both of them together, both of these invoices, they do equal that amount that we approved prior to all this. We just didn't realize they were gonna split the labor upon us, and that's what they did. So basically, we didn't know it was split like this, but we, we, we did, we did know the amount was gonna be there, correct? Um, and it is out of the, uh, parks budget.
We had an invoice for this, um, due meeting's back.
Yeah, the fifty eight.
Fifty-eight three seventeen.
Now it's under a different vendor name as well.
Yeah.
First is the labor.
Yeah.
Vendor.
So this is the labor only then?
Correct.
Is this our last payment?
This is the last payment that council approved previously. Yes, this was the.
So when this came out of the parks, uh?
This came out of the bunch, uh, proceeds from the Lindemire Parks, so, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? No questions, vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor pro Thim McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Venzel?
Aye.
And you, Councilmember Oliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Dugan?
Aye.
The motion passes. Uh, item ten, council member comments? What council member comments?
Uh, thank you all for voting for this slaven. I think we've been doing really good company, and those are quality people, and that company may have a wonderful background. Um, and we're sent to know this and studying it. I think we picked the best company. Thank you for that.
Any other comments? Uh, but we'll see you again. We'll be locked with Spring Fest Living. Good luck. And, uh, for your comments, we will adjourn at five fifty. Thank you.